Welcome, everybody, to the January 27, 2025, meeting of the North Outro Town Council. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Is everybody okay? All right. So, I'll start this off with the approval of the minutes. I'll approve of the town council minutes of January 13, 2025.
I make a motion to approve town council minutes of January 13, 2025.
Second. Twenty-five, I believe I heard.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Yes, you did. I heard correctly. Okay. A motion, second, from Mr. St. Pierre. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Actually abstained.
Any extensions?
Two.
Two extensions? Six-two. Six-zero-two. The minutes are approved. All right, approval of the town council executive session minutes from January 13, 2025.
I make a motion to approve town council executive session minutes of January 13, 2025.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Simmons, a second for Ms. St. Pierre. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Two extensions. That motion passes six. Zero. Two. Good, good. No, I don't believe you actually have to abstain from the meeting that you are not. You are not at, but just...
Someone's hit on us.
It's interesting, yeah. I actually looked that up one time. I think I asked Mike Williams about it. All right, so we had... We were having a talk before the cameras turned on. Regarding what item, guys? Item G of new business, which was discussion of a special home rule act to reduce the tax burden in the event of a positive vote for school debt exclusion. Are there a lot of... Excuse me, there are... How many folks are here tonight for that specific issue?
I couldn't even hear you.
I'm speaking as loud as I can.
Okay.
I don't have a mic. I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I will try to project my voice a little louder. I don't know what else I can do.
Thank you.
So... It's interesting. So last... The Thursday before our last meeting, Councillor Gould submitted, like, a sentence or two on this topic to me for inclusion in our agenda. Given that we set our agendas on Thursday, I couldn't get it on the last meeting, so I scheduled it for this meeting, right? We know there's a council rule. Councillor submits an agenda item. Two meetings, that's kind of the reasonable timeframe to get it on. So this agenda... This is actually on the agenda per Councillor Gould's request at the second meeting after he asked for it. Just so that's on the record. I think subsequently to Mark submitting that agenda item to me, he proceeded to... Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. File a petition for a public hearing on this topic, soliciting 25-plus signatures, which is also under the charter of something that can be done.
That's right, prior to posting this meeting, yeah.
Prior to posting this meeting, but within the two-meeting limit of a president responding to a councillor. So now we're in this interesting situation where we have a public hearing that's slated to be on this very topic, that's slated to happen in... I don't believe we've set a date yet, but I would say probably in a month, month and a half.
You have up to 60 days, Councillor President, to schedule that public...
Month, a 30-60-day window to have this heard. So this is... Unfortunately, folks, this is not a public hearing. If you are led to believe this is a public hearing, it's not a public hearing. There's like a process for that. It has to be posted for 15 days, right? Advertised in the paper. There's like a whole legal process to have a public hearing.
But the public are welcome to attend any one of our meetings.
Robert's Rules of Order, please. I have the floor. You want to address your comments to the Councillor President, if you don't mind?
Point of information, no one said it was a public meeting.
This is a public meeting. It's not a public hearing.
No one said it was a public hearing. Thank you.
Yeah, but people were invited via social media to attend this to attend this public meeting, as if it were a public hearing, in my opinion. And that's why there's a lot of people here that talk about this topic.
It's a good thing that people are here.
So, which is fine. I don't disagree that it's a good thing that people are here. Unfortunately, per the charter, as I was informed earlier today, we're not allowed to have members of the public comment during public comment on an item that's on the agenda. Do you see? This is why we have public hearings, right? So this is why there's usually a process that folks follow and try to get these things on the agenda. We schedule a public hearing.
Point of information, like, the chair can allow public to comment anyways, as we have done repeatedly in this body.
What's the... Does anybody have the charter? I think it's... We can vote, potentially.
I mean, why would... Are you really not going to let him speak? Like, do we need to look it up?
It's just very... It's just incredibly...
We're not going to...
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Thank you. Thank you. So, again, I'm wrestling kind of in real time with how to how to handle something that is very awkward like this. So, given that...
We could just vote him out.
Given that we have a public hearing, that item is not on the agenda just yet. All right, hold on. I don't think we're ready to talk about that. Let me... Can I just talk, please? Can I finish my train of thought? It's difficult when I'm being interrupted. Again, this is very unorthodox, so I'm struggling with trying to make sure that I handle this topic fairly and give respect to the public who are here for this meeting. So I do think we could take this item out of order. If the council were to vote, someone were to make a motion to vote that we could entertain public comment during this agenda item, then we could actually, I think, under the charter, is my understanding, do this be consistent with the charter? Again, it's important that we actually follow the rules of the council and the charter as we handle these sorts of things. I'm just trying to do things the right way. And I'll also just point out that there's going to be a public hearing on this exact topic 30-60 days from now, which may be a moot point, but I don't know. So why don't we take this item out of order? I know there are members of the public who wish to address us this evening. I talked about how this item found its way onto the agenda. If you guys want to make a motion to allow public comment on this topic, I will... If you guys can give a show of hands, how many people want to talk, I'll help figure out the timeline, what the time limit should be. If it's one, I can have the floor for a while. If it's like 10, I'm gonna have to...
Well, I think a lot of us are here, whether our parents or these folks are here, because I don't think anybody wants to miss anything. Like, we don't want to see anything get voted in without us being heard, so...
Understood.
Are we all necessarily ready to speak in front of everybody? Probably not, but if the topic went further where there was... We needed to speak because things were going in the favor of elderly folks not getting a debt exclusion, I think that a lot of people would raise their hand and say, hey, I got something to say. So I don't think it's a lack of participations, just where are we going with this? And it sounds like there's a lot of disarray here, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's... I apologize for the disarray. Again, I think we're a little bit... In full disclosure, frankly, I think we're a little bit early in the process to have like a fully detailed conversation on this. I think even the very agenda item as we have it, like, ideally, this would be referred to a committee where it would be discussed, where it would get to weigh kind of different options. What's the total dollar value of this thing? What's the impact on the tax... On the non-senior exempted taxpayers? Like, those sort of details, I think, need to be documented and understood
We've got all that.
before we could vet. I don't have these items, Mr. Gould, respectfully. I know there was an email that was sent out today with some information, but honestly, like, most of us work full-time jobs and don't have time to, like, read something this documented and then no less vote on it in one night. Like, I would be happy to refer this topic to a committee if somebody wanted to make that make that motion. Personally, I'm not gonna... I wouldn't be forced to vote no on this tonight because I don't have haven't digested that information. I don't feel like it's appropriate to even vote on this matter. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, but that's that's my point of view of this thing.
Go ahead.
So I just want to say, I think it is amazing that everyone came out, because this is, I think, the first time I've seen this many faces in this room during one of our meetings, so it's fantastic. I invited Joanne tonight, after meeting her today during physical therapy. So we're doing our squats, because she had some concerns herself on this topic. And what I said to her, and I'll say to all of you tonight, is I think it is good that you come out and you hear what's going on. But to Councillor President Paray's concern is that we're getting this information too as we're going, and no major decision was going to be made tonight either. So if that was something that you understood tonight, that is not the truth and was not going to happen tonight. We are all learning this as we go, and we're gonna keep informing you as much as possible. I do encourage you all to attend these meetings and also attend others. This Thursday is going to be a meeting about... For a group that's really for pushing the school. Learn as much as you can about this topic and how it's going to affect you and your families. But as of tonight, no, there wasn't a major decision going to be made tonight, and it wouldn't be without the concern and voices that we want to hear from all of you.
Thank you. I will open it up to a public comment officially if we have a motion, Mr. Gregory.
Again, just to add, I think something of this magnitude just typically is unprecedented. We never vote something like this on the floor. That's just not how we typically have done business since I've been in this seat. So there's a process that we'd like to follow. We would like to get a recommendation from a subcommittee or two, and then we would have favorable action at that point, if there was a positive recommendation from the committee. That's something of this magnitude, that's the way business should be handled. Anything else from that, I think, is just a reach for all the wrong intentions.
Mr. Gould.
So I submitted this after consulting with councillors, with the town manager, with the public. There seems to be near unanimous consent for it. This is identical to a special act that was passed by the town of Popkington, who favorably recommends this. It was posted as a special home rule act to consider, it was posted as a discussion. However, it is reasonably related to the discussion, that we could vote on this tonight, contingent on our legal counsel saying it's okay. And they could say, no, we have to have a public hearing in a month or two. If this council feels like so strongly, we can't do it. We could do it tonight if our council says, no, that's not effective. Okay, then we do it again later. I'm just trying to save everyone's time, save our time. And if we don't do this, like, imminently, it takes time to pass a special act. Like, our representative at the State House, like, how we're saying we wanted to go to a committee, to go to another committee, but why? We all know we're gonna pass it. That's government. Delay, delay. That's not what... Why I ran. That's not why I believe we all ran. We ran to do the right thing by the people. We have an opportunity to do that tonight. Mr. Simmons.
So I've heard that it's near unanimous from the people you've talked to on Facebook, and it is unquestioned that we're all gonna vote for it 100%. I'm not voting for it now or after the public hearing. The high school project is a town project. It benefits the town. If the town, as a whole, decides to vote for it, separating segments of society out, so they don't have to bear the burden, sets one group of citizens against another group of citizens. If the town benefits as a whole, the town should also bear the burden as a whole. We have done everything that we can to help the seniors in this town through increasing exemptions, maximizing the work-off. But to hear you say that it's near unanimous, and it's obvious that we're going to pass this, I don't think we're anywhere near that.
Respectfully, you spoke in favor of doing something for the seniors when the high school costs came out. The vice president and the president both did. This is something...
Point of order. I think I have the floor, so...
You do, you do. Let's try to abide by Robert Shulz's orders and not speak over other councillors tonight, please.
I did say that I wanted to help the seniors, and then we did. We increased the senior work-off program, maximized it, and then with your assistance, we also allowed people who were disabled to have other people work for them. The way that this process was handled is a detriment to the process. There is no rush for this, as the tax increase is two years away, if any. The school has to pass first. We don't have all the final numbers yet. We don't have the information necessary to make an accurate decision. This reeks of political maneuvering, and it goes against everything that we've tried to do here on council to keep this community together. It is not town versus school. It is not senior citizens...
Councillor President, you can't disparage of the council's intentions. That's against the rules. And it's manifestly untrue, but it's against the rules.
I don't know. I don't know if speaking for all of us and everybody in town is against against the rules either, but I'll say, okay, let's not disparage of the councillors. That was... I'm sure that wasn't...
So how do we... Where are we now?
Mr. President. Not that I don't agree with everything you say. Mr. Donovan.
You just disparaged me again.
Given that we don't have a measure to either refer or vote on, that there is a public hearing that will be scheduled based on a petition, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone Item G, discussion of Special Home Rule Act indefinitely.
Is a motion?
That's a motion.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Postpone it, postpone the discussion. To postpone the discussion of the non-abiding individuals question.
Mr. President.
And I'll ask, excuse me, Mr. Gould. As I always do, I have to confirm that I have motion. A second, I'll ask, is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Gould.
If this motion passes, does that mean all these people aren't allowed to talk for 30 seconds to a minute each?
That's a good question.
Point of order.
Mr. Donovan.
We never got a motion to allow public comment.
Sure, they have. That doesn't have to get... Mr. Simmons.
I will make a motion to allow public comment.
Do I need to withdraw my motion personally?
No, because I think...
You can't only do one at a time.
For the discussion.
You should just... It gets too...
Yeah.
I want people to come to meetings, so I don't want you to feel that you come and then we say, no, you can't talk.
Just this motion doesn't spend the rules.
What we could do is... I don't think we're allowed to do that, actually. We talked about that before. Maybe you... Do you think we could just have them do this during a resident committee conference? Open it up then.
Again, based on the charter, we need a vote to allow that. So I'll withdraw my motion. So we have a lot... Because my motion wouldn't allow for any comment, so I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
All right.
So we've we've had some conversations that we normally might have behind closed doors in front of everybody tonight, which is kind of... I hope it's kind of interesting.
Get out this passenger vehicle.
That's what happens sometimes, you know, given kind of timing of when we receive information. So therefore, if anybody wants to make a mo... If the public does, and again, you're obviously more than welcome to speak, and we'd love to hear from you tonight or in the future. There will be a public hearing on this topic in a month or two, right? And that's gonna be with a more fully baked, you know, plan, and the council will have a decision at that point, have opinions on this besides maybe one of us. So if anybody wants to make said motion to allow discussion on this, so...
Seconds.
A motion, a second to allow public discussion. Again, I'll try to keep it to a minimum, time limits. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Any extension? Okay, we can do that now. Mr. Donovan, after the discussion, you're more than welcome to make the motion that you made earlier, if you should so choose, or anyone else could. So with that, I guess I'll give the public an opportunity to speak. See Mr. Sweet's hands first, I'll...
Thank you, Mr. Paray.
Go.
Christopher Sweet, President of the town, excuse me, as the treasurer of the town, I just want to assure everybody that there's no time limit on this. The... If it's passed in June, I'm the one that's personally responsible for borrowing the money to build this high school. And it's gonna take time. It's gonna take a lot of time before we even get the first bond issued done. We'll have a shovel in the ground until 2027, if early. We won't need the money until then. We won't need this exemption until then. So there's plenty of time. Take a breath, relax. We'll address it in time.
Thank you, Mr. Sweet. It's important... It is important to note that the timing here, how much time we have. I appreciate that feedback, but...
I was asking, anyone that goes to Sweet, go up to the table so I can get a better shot?
We go... The North TV, the voice of North TV is the boss. It's for folks, so... Unless you're unable to head up there, then you can feel free, please, to stay in your seat.
If you can, I'll find you.
He'll find you. Let us know. I don't want you to feel like you have to go to that table, but... If you can, you can do it. Anybody... Any other members of the public wish to address the council on this topic? Yes.
Is it all right if I sit here?
It's probably all right.
My name is Joan Gustaf. I live at 66 Hillside Road. I've been there for 25 years. I am a senior citizen. I kind of hope that I'm here addressing the right topic, so I'm just gonna say what I need to say.
Of course.
As I said, I've lived here for 25 years. I am a senior citizen, and five years ago, I retired, and I started collecting Social Security. I'm very fortunate that my husband is still working, although he's gonna retire any minute now, I hope. And when he does, we will then be living on his Social Security and mine, and it will be our fixed income. I'm very fortunate in that I have... No, I'm gonna go back a step. I want to point out that two years ago, there was a reassessment of all of our properties in this town. At that time, my tax... My property taxes went up $600. I did not do any improvements on my property, but my taxes still went up $600. In the 25 years I've been here, I hadn't done any improvements on the property, but my taxes still went up $600. I never had any children, so I've never had any kids in the public school system, but I've still paid my taxes, because I think that's an important thing for me to do as a member of this community. However, with my taxes having gone up $600, and now I'm being asked to pay an additional $1,000 for 30 years, if I live that long, which is highly unlikely, I'm deeply concerned. Right now, I could start to... I'm somebody who's in the middle. I'm not rich, but I'm also not living in need of additional financial support. But that's not gonna be the case five years from now, when my taxes will continue to go up because property values will continue to go up, and my insurance will go up, and all the other things that go up with that. And five years from now, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to pay all of that money, because it's not keeping up... We can't keep up with the cost of living. So I'm deeply concerned about what's gonna happen to me as a senior citizen living in this town. Am I gonna have to declare bankruptcy? Am I gonna have to spend all of my finances in order to be able to pay the taxes in this town? In order to be able to stay living in this town? Or am I gonna have to sell because I can't... And move to Kentucky? Because I can't afford to live here anymore. I don't want that to happen. I've lived here for 25 years. I kind of like this town. So I'm asking the town council to consider a different type of plan for... And I don't know what you call that. It's non-abatement. It's something for... To help the senior citizens of this town. Instead of having a cap on how much a senior citizen can make... I'm not sure what the answer is. Possibly the answer is to have a set amount for all senior citizens in town. I just know that I don't want to have to move from this town because I can't afford to pay my taxes. And the way things are going, that's what's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
My name's Mary Lou McCarthy. I live at 95 Avro Way, and I agree with Joan totally. I've been with her for seven years. My taxes have gone up $2,000. And I'm by myself, and it's gonna be very difficult for me to afford an additional $1,000.
Now, the $1,000 number is being mentioned. That's not necessarily what the amount will be. That's correct. Right, Mr. Forrest?
So technically, how it would work would be, and we pegged the average home... Cheryl, where are you at? What's the average home value today?
$569.
So if you had a home value assessed, not appraised, assessed at $569, the estimated cost would be right at $1,000 for that.
That's me.
It was less than $1,000, though.
That was right at the mean. It was right. That's the breakpoint. If you're lower than that, it would be lower. If your home was assessed at $400, you would pay less. If it was $700, you would pay more. But that's a debt exclusion, not a no-brake. Yes?
I also want to point out that this is... This will be a town-wide vote, whether or not we end up borrowing for the school. This is not a town council vote. We don't get to say, yes, we're gonna borrow. This is the whole town doing it. The town's going to make this decision on what's best for the town. And I have a real difficult time with it, because what's best for the town may not be best for a number of our citizens in town. And I don't know how to weigh that. I don't know which is gonna have more value. I can tell you that the school is needed. I can tell you that we picked the best option we could have. And I can tell you that this is the cheapest it's gonna be. And we have the state helping us with a percentage. It's not half, but it is a decent percentage. So I don't know. But I don't think separating citizens from other citizens is the answer. I think everybody has to fix this. And everyone's gonna have to vote on this. I urge everyone to get out to the polls to vote, to do the homework, to watch the videos, to read everything about the schools, and to take advantage of everything else we've done with senior exemptions. We have some tools in our toolbox to help. We have the ability to change the shift, to have our businesses pay a larger burden than our residences for tax years. That's not an easy answer either, because we're trying to bring business in to help reduce the taxes the residents have to pay, and if we increase the taxes on our businesses, they're not gonna come. I can say that we have the lowest business rate. We have the lowest residential rate, minus Mansfield, 2 cents. Mansfield's 2 cents lower than we are in the area. We've done everything we can do to keep the tax rate down, which is what we have the actual the actual control over. Home values is not in our control. Real estate market is through the roof, insane. It drives everybody's house prices up. And that helps people who want to sell, but it doesn't help seniors who don't want to sell, who don't want their property values to go up anymore, and they want to stay in town. I don't want to seem callous to the effect that that could have. I just don't think separating citizens, groups of citizens, is the right way to do this when the entire town benefits from education. Whether or not you've had kids, ever, the town benefits from education. It makes the town a more attractive place to bring people to. The goal is to do that without driving the people that are already here out. And it's not an easy thing to weigh, and it's extremely difficult trying to do it under an artificial compressed timeline. We will have a public hearing on this. We have to. On this issue, on this tax exemption issue, we will have a public hearing. I hope everybody comes back for it. I hope everybody speaks. I hope we have numbers on both sides. It's not gonna be an easy decision.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Yeah, I agree. I want you guys to know, in addition to all the exemptions that we've expanded and doubled over the past two or three years for seniors and veterans, elderly 17D, elderly survivor, veteran 22AF, veteran 22E, veteran parents, blind, elderly 41C, senior work-off. So there's a list of eight or nine of them. $350,000 was, you know, exempted from those qualifying folks in the past year. We're already at that same number now for FY '25. And like Mr. Simmons said, and like I think we've said consistently from the beginning, we're... And we're still kind of early in this process, right? Like, the vote isn't until June, guys. The vote is... Here we are in late January. So a lot of these plans are gonna come into effect. But the notion of leveraging the tax split, like we have, I think, and when we talk about the tax split, that's the share of the total tax burden that residents, residential homeowners pay, and the commercial and industrial pay. And we're a very heavily residential town, so the residents are paying more by the character of our town. I think one of the things that we've always tried to do since, you know, since I've been around and since most of these folks have been around, is we try to have an equitable split every year. So we try to keep the amount that taxes are going to increase relatively proportional. between residential and business, so that neither side is overly negatively impacted. Personally, and I'm not speaking for the council, I'm speaking only for myself, I do think that in two years from now, when we're setting the tax split for when this debt exclusion would actually impact taxpayers, we could look very realistically, could make more of a shift towards the businesses that year, or for two years, to help weather the residential sector through two or three years, to kind of work up towards... Just kind of phase that in, because I think one of the things that people need and crave and want is certainty, right? We don't like... People don't like uncertainty. I don't like uncertainty. We don't like shock. Like, we don't wanna rip the Band-Aid off of this thing and say, hey, say it's the average home, and it's $1,000. Say that's the number. You know, if there's ways in which we could make that number lower, right? Kind of work into it over a few years, so that impact is mitigated, that is 100% something that I will push for on this council. And I know others would probably join me, but I'm not gonna say they will, that we would all definitely think about as part of that process. So there's tools that we have in our kit, as Mr. Simmons said, including this exemption, which we are going to have a public hearing on. And once... For me, the key to this thing, again, is gonna be understanding the total dollars that are at play, what the impact of any sort of shifts with an exemption would be towards the other residents, besides the seniors. How much are seniors gonna save, who are eligible? And how much are the other residents gonna have to pick up, because we make that decision? We have to keep all that stuff in balance, so that it's fair. So there's a lot to think about with this. I'm glad that we have some time between now and the public hearing. I just think we need a lot more information to do this right. Rushing into something like this would be foolish. I think it's not something we would ever do. We would never make a decision, this impactful monumental, you know, on the fly like that. That's just not smart management. That's not how we run this town. That's my opinion. I know it's supposed to be a community comment. I apologize if there's others. Please, sir.
My name is Kevin Hustler. I live at 31 Draper Avenue. My dad lives at 90... My mom and my dad live at 97 Glenfield Road. I'm here to kind of speak for them. He doesn't need a voice. You don't want him to speak to you guys. But, you know, this is difficult for me to watch my 85-year-old parents go through this. I was here for the two-and-a-half override. We were pretty much... Didn't have a choice in that. You know, I paid between $7,000 and $8,000 a year in property tax on a $700,000 house. My dad's into your gash for about $5,000, roughly, somewhere around that.
Six.
Six. So between the two of us, you're looking at $15,000 a year in tax burden. So, you know, we're talking about equity here, and I understand what you're trying to say. We should all, as a community, try to sort of bear this expense. I get it. But I think a lot of the reason... Now, I'm talking to everybody, and I'm not trying to be a spokesperson, because Blea might put it out. But I was here for the two-and-a-half override. There's a lot of elderly folks there. We lost on that one. And people came in here because they wanted to have a voice, but the people that were fanning the flames, that really, really wanted that, they had the majority of that thing. So we were already... They were... Not me, I'm only 54, but they were already at a disadvantage. Tonight, I heard next Thursday, people are coming in here to really... Well, what did I hear earlier than Thursday? Who's coming in Thursday to promote this?
No, there's actually not a...
It's not here. It's actually in a business downtown.
Okay, so they're at a business downtown. Is it a public thing? Or this...
No, I don't think that's right. The next public forum for the school, I don't know where that is. I think it's in February 13th.
February 13th.
February 13th is actually the next official opportunity for folks to come in. That would be the one to come to versus what council's...
Okay. I guess my point tonight is just that I think a lot of people are here because they're already at a disadvantage. Let's face it. The majority of this vote for the school is not gonna be won or probably lost from the folks that are old in this town. It's gonna be won by the young folks that have kids in the school system. And again, that's what it's gonna be won for. So we talk about equity. We're already at a... They are already at a disadvantage. And that's the reason why I sent the Facebook thing in. I saw the article in the Sun Chronicle, so we would come in, and I think that we'd have some sort of a voice. So I... It's difficult for me to swallow this. As a lifelong resident of this town, I have folks that have been here for 85 years, I don't know how much more they can give. And that's just... And I'm not trying to win approval. I just don't know how much more they can give. So that's all I can say.
Thank you. Sir.
Yeah.
Have to bear with me, I'm a little hot here. I just wanted to just say that I thank Kevin for coming up and speaking for me, but I want everyone to understand something. I've been in this town and paying taxes, own real estate since 1964. This lady mentioned her 25 years. She's a newbie. I'm 60 years old. I already paid for high school. Now I'm looking at another one. Scares the hell out of me. Make no mistake, I consider myself very fortunate. I'm 84 years old, and I'm still able to work a part-time job. If it wasn't for that, let me tell you something. Being here right now, paying what I'm paying already, would be a real struggle for me. I understand what this gentleman's saying about division. I understand that. But you have to understand something. We all get old. Those of us that are fortunate and yet unfortunate, to live as old as I am, life gets to be pretty tough. What's happened with real estate values and all of the things, the cost of living, it affects people like me in a very distinctive way. Even with my part-time job, my wife and I live, and we have our granddaughter with us, because they have a hard time making it on their own. I do that on $50,000 a year. Try it out. It's not pretty. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sandy Forjel. I live at 509 Drive. And I'm a senior citizen as well, and I agree that it has to be equitable, and we're all living on a fixed income, and I'm retired. But I also wanna thank the board for being as open and helping out the seniors as much as you have. Increasing the tax write-off from $1,000 to $2,000, they deserve a roundtable plus for that, because that's huge. Take $2,000 off the tax bill. There's also things like circuit breakers. If you're over 65 in Massachusetts, you can get money back from the state of Massachusetts, or you can pay towards your property taxes, up to $2,500. So there are things in the state, other things in the state, that people that are retired and are struggling can do or use to kind of, in order to be able to stay in the town. And I'd love to have my taxes lowered too, but I also agree that the town does need a new high school. That's what's gonna take us forward. That's what's gonna bring our kids forward and keep up with the other towns in technology and all that stuff that our kids are gonna be exposed to.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Dan Charbickley, 152 South Broadway. I think I would just like to say, we need, obviously need a lot more information on this, and it sounds like that will be forthcoming. I know everyone's fired up. There's a lot of numbers going around, and clickbait things, and et cetera like that. But at the end of the day, I'm sure there will be a thorough presentation at some point in the future, at which we can all make a fully educated decision. And right now, nobody has that, so I think... I look forward to that very much.
Yes, thank you. Me too.
My name is... Excuse me. Bad voice. My name is Bob Vassalier. I've lived in the town since 1983. I'm a newbie too, I guess. One of the things I think that you were talking about was all of the other benefits, like veterans' benefits. I am a veteran. If you're a disabled veteran, the state of Massachusetts mandates that the town gives $400 off the property taxes. Excuse me. North Attleboro has doubled that. And I'm wondering about all of these other things that encompass the tax rate and tax payment. I'm wondering if that really needs a very good review, to say, where is the best place to put money, or to give money in those types of situations? Yes, we need a new high school. I believe that as a resident, we have to support the whole town, as this gentleman here said. But how do we do it? I've been retired for, excuse me, 16 years. And... But this lady here said her husband's getting her to retire. A senior couple, if one of them dies, the income is probably going to be maybe cut in half. And what does that do to a senior? Well, first of all, it changes the whole tax structure, because not only are you losing income, you are gonna pay higher federal taxes, because you can no longer file as a couple. You are gonna file as a single person, which makes a higher tax rate. And as seniors, we are close to the jumping-off point. So those things have to be considered. I do believe we have to support the town, but I think all of these reductions, as the president said, happens. I think they need a strong review, and I think it's hard choices that are going to be have to made. So that's all I have to say. And thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Good to be back. I wonder about that, to see spouse. Is that something we can talk to Adam Scanlon about, our state rep? It's just something that is part of our review. We do review the exemptions every year as part of the budget process.
So let me hear that.
That would be something to... Just to see. I wasn't aware of that. Yes, sir.
(inaudible). (inaudible). Good day my whole life. I'm considering the town. It's not many of you, probably. As long as I can work a part-time job, I'll be able to stay in town. My family's been here since 1900. I'm the last one here. Say to go to housing, I have a friend who's a veteran. He was told he'd have to wait over five years on the waiting list. And the only way to move up on that was if you have to be homeless, literally, on the street. These people, including myself, they aren't gonna be able to afford their houses. Where are they gonna go? So the decisions on this town spending a lot of money is gonna force these people out of their homes. So there's gonna be some sort of a balance. And as far as a school is concerned, you need to be honest with the total cost of this school, so that we all know what we're spending. It's never been brought up about why the original school was not as where it is today. It was supposed to be put where you wanna put it. Do you know the reason why it was moved? Is anybody? Because there's 35 or 40 feet of peat moss under that area where you wanna put the school and build on peat moss. There's no hard ground there.
It's all swamp.
Correct. You built a... You spent, what, $1.5 million on the diamond, the school baseball? It's not used. Why? It's too wet. 12 months a year. That's why they still play the balls in the back over here. So there's a large expense just to stop to put that school there. And that's why I say to you, be honest what it's gonna cost us. Because you're not gonna come later on and tell us, oh, well, here we are, we're gonna spend another $100 million, or whatever, to put this wherever it is. You have schools, all those fields. Is this all included, to put on the fields, again, into this numbers? If it is, fine. I'm just saying, it needs to be all in the numbers for us to know.
And the plan regarding the fields is to leave the high school football field complex.
Well, I hope so. I mean, after you spend the money. But what I'm trying to say is, the school's been in the plant for, what, three years?
This process started 70 years ago.
70 years ago. So why would you go spend $1.6 million on a baseball diamond, when you know you're gonna be removing it? That's a waste that taxpayers make.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. On that topic, at least.
Okay. But it's a sad situation, you're forcing the elderly and some of the non-fortunates people out of their homes. They don't know where they're gonna go, there's no housing for them.
And that's a very important distinction, that it isn't necessarily just the elderly that are gonna have problems with this tax increase. It's gonna be more than just the elderly.
Correct.
And we're gonna do everything we can, realistically, to try and limit the burden. But we understand that if this passes, there's sometimes nothing we can do to limit the burden.
But you talked about not dividing the community, but by doing this, you're dividing the community by someone you... See you later, take it easy. See you later, bye-bye.
That's gonna depend on the town vote. I think the town's gonna have to vote this, and they're gonna have to make a very difficult decision. And so are we. We're all obviously members of the town. We're gonna have to have a hard vote ourselves. But I believe you about the accuracy of the price and about being open for coming absolutely detailed about what this is.
Because I guarantee you, no one's ever done any testing in there to find out where it is, how big it is, how deep it is, and the cost to remove it and to bring in good material, put it back.
I think we can make sure to... Again, appreciate your comments. At the next community forum, that issue can be addressed. I think as far as the structural... I know for a fact that there are structural engineers, and they were drilling holes in that area, so they're in fact...
That's why the existing school's so...
There in fact has been testing done on that plot of land. However, again, I appreciate your raising that concern specifically. We can make sure that it's addressed at the next community public forum on February 13th. So that will be addressed accordingly. So certainly, we would not want to build this school on a piece of property that would have that issue. We wouldn't do that. If we did, some head would roll, because that's ridiculous.
Is February 13th the regular MSPA meeting, or is that a public forum at the high school?
That is the community forum at the high school.
Yeah, in the auditorium.
I would encourage everybody to attend, so you can have your voice heard.
Perhaps we should arrange a tour of the high school at that meeting, so folks can see the condition.
There will be a tour.
There will be. Thank you. I think that would be it. So there will be a tour of the high school on February 13th, so folks if they wanna come take a look at what we're dealing with here, I think that would be educational for everybody. I know I'll be there myself. All right, folks. And we are gonna have a public hearing on this topic in a couple months. All right, so I think we've appreciated everyone's feedback from the public on this topic. Invite you to come back. When we have a little more information, we're ready to have a deeper conversation on this in a couple months' time. We had our discussion on what we need in the motions, everything. So we're in resident community comment right now? Oh, sir.
I have a question.
Sure.
So you have an agenda.
We do.
And you just had a discussion on a specific item, basically out of a sequence that was originally planned. So is that... Is this item 5 resident in community comment?
Guys, did anybody make the motion to discuss this topic? So this was not resident community comment? What we just...
This was.
Oh, we elected to move this. Okay, I got you guys. So now we are still in resident community comment, and you can... So if there's other folks that still wanna talk, you can still even talk about this particular topic. I'd also encourage folks, if there's residents who wanna talk about other topics, now you can do so as well.
Okay.
Is that your question?
You did.
Okay, good.
So I'd like to make a comment. Can I stand over here?
Sure. Yes, of course. Of course.
So I came here under a... My purpose of coming here tonight was to... Simply as a taxpayer, as a resident, and obviously a senior citizen, I had put together some notes that I wanted to talk to the committee, address the committee and other town officials on a senior's perspective of a new building. I had no clue all this other stuff was going on. And so I opened the door and came into the wrong room. And my comments are... I had no idea the senior rule or any... And my comments are, I had no idea the senior rule or anything like that was going on. So I don't want anyone to be offended by what I have to say addressing the school building project. That was not my choice, not my intent. So obviously, I'm a senior citizen, and I was, came here to reinforce the idea that the school building project did have some senior support. I realize anytime a town takes on, or a city takes on, a major improvement project with financial implications, taxpayers are faced with having to make a decision. For me, I looked at that question about undertaking a school impact project, I said, is there a need for a change? So for me to look at that and understand it and come to a conclusion, I looked at it from two, two perspectives. First, I put on a different hat that says Papa Ed. I'm a grandfather. I live in town. So over the past twelve years, I've been fortunate to see my grandkids that live here, North Attleboro, go through the public school system. As I go to the different activities and events at both North Attleboro High School and other schools in the Hockamark League, you begin to look around at what they have there. Last five years, spent a lot of time at the different high schools in the Hockamark. And all you have to do is look at Attleboro High School, Stoughton High School, Franklin High School, Easton, and realize, wow, look what they have here. Look at the learning environments, look at the space, look at the resources, look at the technologies that they're being offered. You stop and say, why can't we have that here in North? And I am not saying by any means that my grandkids are not getting a good education. They are going to be getting a good education. I have a granddaughter that's graduating, she's had access to AP courses, high honors courses, the proof is in the pudding. She applied to seven colleges and got accepted in art. So it's not just a, or to talk down what we currently have. What I'm saying is the youth of our town deserve more opportunities that will come with the modernization of our facilities. We'll have an expansion of services, a varying learning environments, and an improvement in technology. The second way I look to the question is why change, why support it, is that I'm also been a parent, and I raised three kids that went through public education in a neighboring town. So I've witnessed firsthand the importance of major building improvements throughout their public school years. Some of those taxpayers that had to vote or support it were not only parents like myself, but also seniors. But the town came together and supported things that would benefit my kids. So personally, for me, I look at this and I say, now it's my turn. It's a generational thing. And for these reasons, as a resident, a taxpayer, a parent, and a grandparent, I support this building improvement that are being discussed. It's more than a building, it's hope, it's opportunity, it gives our youth a well-equipped learning environment where they can thrive and reach their full potential. So hopefully, we all can come together, make this vision a reality for the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gould?
I just want to mention that I did do significant research on the numbers, and when we do the, the presentation, you'll see that the numbers are, it would add roughly ten to twenty dollars for everyone else's tax to exempt seniors from, from a thousand dollars. I know, I know that's not the exact number it's going to be, but that's the rough approximation, ten to twenty dollars for everyone else to take it off seniors. If we did match the tax split, it would save a maximum of 137 dollars for the annual, for the average resident. So that's, that's thirteen percent of the, the proposed thousand dollars. And just a last comment on the timing, maybe this is a question to the treasurer, if, if we don't do this now, if we do it in a month or two, would Representative Scanlon have enough time to pass it before the debt exclusion vote in June? Would people voting for the debt exclusion know if seniors are going to get an exemption or not?
That is not part of the discussion. The discussion is-
You said we have enough time.
We have enough time to do this at any time. We can do this after this can vote.
So we're not going to know when we vote for the new school, if we don't vote for it?
Mr. Gould, thank you for letting me speak. You can do this vote for debt exclusion on the, for, should I say, the exemption, and it's a special legislation, so it's going to be, the session just started, they finished filing, you can get special legislation in, but it'll have to take place whenever the legislature wants to do it, not on any timetable.
Which is after the high school vote.
It's got nothing to do-
If we don't do it tonight.
All right, let's stop having the back and forth, please.
Is it not?
Let Mr. Sweet finish his comments, you invoked his, his name. Let's let him finish, please. I'll, I'll give you a chance to, to rebut, if you might really like to move on, Mr. Sweet, please.
I guess, and if he's not taking my word, he can talk to Representative Scanlon. Thank you.
So I understand that if we don't approve it tonight, we're not going to know by June when we vote for the tax, if it includes the seniors or not.
I'm begging you to not ask us to, to vote on this tonight, please. I'm begging you, don't ask us to vote on this tonight. We haven't had a chance to even look at the numbers. I'm not going to just take your, your word for it. I know that none of these councils will, we really want to talk to our assessor and have these numbers vetted and validated, but if we vote on this tonight, it would, it would do it in failure.
Could we do it in two weeks, and I'll prepare PowerPoint?
We're, we're having a public hearing on this, we can do our best to have, I'll, I'll deal, I don't know if I want to talk about the schedule in this thing right now if you, if during last-
So the answer is no. But thank you for coming out, everyone. We, we did appreciate hearing you.
All right, Mark. Yes, Mr. Cassell?
All right, if we vote on this tonight, they will pass. I think there is some, among some members, for this exemption, but we need to have an honest, tangible discussion at some committee. That's how we make decisions here, because we want to make sure we make the most well-informed decision, because all of these actions, anything we pass affects everybody in some way, shape, or form. I mean, yes, the exemption would be for seniors, but as was mentioned, it would affect everybody else. I'll go on the record and say I am willing to support the exemption, but we need to have a real discussion first.
Thank you, Cassell. Yeah, I, I don't think the, I don't think the public wants the council to make rash decisions. I just don't think that's what you guys want of us. So as long as I'm the president of this council, we're not going to do that. That's just, I'm sorry.
Two weeks long enough, Mr. President.
You're out of order, Mark. Did someone else have, someone else have Keith, a Mr. Gould point? It's not a circus, this isn't a circus, guys. It's not, it's not a bully pulpit, it's not a circus. Sorry, Mr. Gould point?
Town Council, Keith Gould Point, Gramati Drive. I just want to make it clear that I'm here representing myself, even though I happen to be a member of the school committee, also a member of the school building committee, I'm also the only person in this town who was formerly the council president, was also vice chairman of the board of selectmen. And I did come here, unlike others, because I had heard there was going to be some sort of public, I don't know, discussion about things that I think this council should take very seriously and very sacred. I believe that when you take taxpayers' money, it is a sacred relationship. It was, it is literally a sacred relationship. We come together as a community, to be together as a community, we pool our money, you all, with the town manager, make recommendations and decisions on how to spend that for our collective good. It's a serious responsibility. But what is even more serious than that is when there's a recommendation to take money from one person's pocket and put it in another person's pocket, not to improve the community, not for the collective good, literally for one group to pay for another group. Sometimes it's warranted. You've done a lot of work collectively to advance the idea of the senior tax exemptions, disability exemptions. I, I applaud you for that. You took that farther than I could have ever imagined it going when I left this council four years ago. But if you're going to move forward with an idea that does more than that, that takes money from one pocket and puts it in another, then I would urge you to do that carefully, with full consideration. What, you know what's good about what we've got going on in town right now? Is we've come to a point where we work together collaboratively to make decisions. You don't ramrod stuff through, especially when it comes to taking money, again, from one person's pocket and putting it in another. So that's what I came here to say. Do your job. That's your job. Think about it carefully. I trust you. You've been doing a phenomenal job, and on this issue do it. And don't let politics get in the way of this. This school project is an important project for this community. It's been a really thorough process to hear, but it's not done. We can't have misinformation out there. There's test holes being dug all over that flipping property, right? The people who are leading this are experienced architects, builders, designers, they know what they're doing. We're not going to build it a swamp, okay? But let that process happen. The reason the vote's in June is because we're not ready. We're going to be transparent. Those numbers that got put out early were to give people in the community an initial idea. Two-hundred-and-ninety thousand, at 290 million dollars, that's what the project's going to cost. We expect to get about 100 million dollars back from the state. That's the detail we know right now. Before you vote on it, you should demand for precise detail. And we'll have it. There's been six community forums already. There's another one, February 13th. You've got the opportunity. Come hear what the design is, understand why it matters, understand the deficiencies in that school that wasn't built for an education plan, it was built to manage capacity. That's why that school was built, because that building next door is full. They didn't take the time to do an education plan. They didn't think about the long-term viability of that building. I don't know how to tell you, it's a bad building, okay? Most of the buildings in this town, though, are pretty good. Those elementary schools, they're really good. But now we have a chance to do something about it, we're going to do it the right way, the community's going to have all of the relevant information. I'm sure that you can go through the proposal, which I think is a proposal worth considering. You should go through it, figure it out, understand your responsibility when you're taking money out of my pocket, using it for the collective good, and when you're taking my money out of, money out of my pocket and you're putting it in somebody else's pocket. So all I got to say, keep up the good work, stay the course.
Thank you, Keith. Mr. Gudmund.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, this whole discussion, while it, I, I agree with what Mr. Gould point just said, that it's, it's definitely worthwhile. It's extremely premature, and right now, we're, we're debating a hypothetical. The, the vote for the debt exclusion is June 2nd?
Third.
Third. We won't know until late on June 3rd, maybe not until June 4th, whether it passes or not. From what Mr. Sweet has told us, we then have a couple of years, probably, to, to debate this and figure out whether this exemption needs to happen and how to make it work before those property tax bills see that. We don't need that. And Mr. Gould's point that if we don't vote it tonight, the legislature won't pass it by June, there's no guarantee that if we did vote it tonight, the legislature would pass it by June. They're supposed to pass the budget by July 1st every year. This year was August-
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first. Okay? I worked on a bill, I worked my ass off, and I'm sorry I'm getting a little fired up about this part, but to try and get a law passed to deal with runway drivers, that's been sitting up on Beacon Hill since 2017. I got it on TV, I got it on the radio, I contacted a hundred different legislatures, laters. What happened to that bill? Nothing. It died. Okay? Just because we do something tonight doesn't mean Beacon Hill is going to do anything. So that is extremely disingenuous to say that, that we need to pass something tonight to make it happen at Beacon Hill. I have the floor, you can wait until I'm done. This is a hypothetical situation, we need to get data in order to make these decisions, and we don't have it now. We will have it by the time the vote is going to happen on June 3rd, but we don't have it now. Thank you.
I'd like to move on. Gould, your vote, so go ahead.
I was involved, thank you. Has anyone here ever passed a special act? No, I'm the only one in the row. It takes about, it takes months. If we start now, no, there's no guarantee, the only guarantees in life are death and taxes. If we passed it, not now, in two weeks from now, with a reasonable time to prepare a presentation, that would maximize the chances of us passing it. If we wait a month or two, there's almost, that's going to drastically reduce the chances. It goes from eighty percent to twenty percent. I'd go with the eighty percent. Two weeks is enough to prepare. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, your concerns are noted. Does anybody have any motions to make with this one? Not all, move on. Yeah, satisfy the discussion, and then some. All right, very good. Thank you, everybody. Here we go. I'm going to close out community comment now. Is there anybody else to talk about anything else from the public? You are welcome to.
That one thing I found you about. You can come up where you can stand and- So I bring with me a Mr. Charles Arrenti, who lost his cat. He, he just wants to know if anybody saw his cat, it was either lost or adopted back in, in July. It's a white cat with orange ears, an orange striped tail. It's, it's actually called a Flame Point Siamese. It's a rare breed worth thousands of dollars. Mr. Arrenti gave me permission to say that he, he has anxiety and is dyslexic and ADHD is a comfort cat. If anybody knows where this, has seen a white cat with orange ears, orange striped tail, he, they can email arrenti, A-R-I-E-N-T-I, 1995 at gmail dot com, or call his cell,
One more time on the email address.
A-R-I-E-N-T-I, 1995 at gmail dot com.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful white cat with orange striping.
All right, thank you. All right, now we'll close out resident, you didn't comment. We'll go back to the beginning. Any town council announcements?
I'll, I'll pretend that you didn't act disgusted when I went to make an announcement.
You don't have to act, you don't have to act.
So I do just want to mention that that last meeting, I, there was a significant council announcement, but for whatever reason, the video did not include it, the, the town's Facebook cut it off. So I'll say it here for emphasis that there is a proposal for qualifying senior citizens to have zero-dollar tax increase for the new high school, and it was kind enough to be placed on the agenda for discussion today. I only say that because it was on, it was, we streamed our meeting and we didn't include that part, so hopefully it's included now. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other council announcements? All right, good. We'll move on to, did you know I have a town committee report this?
I didn't see it on there, but I do have one ready, sir, if you want to indulge me.
It's not on the agenda. Anything you want me to read, or anything that's really-
I'm just recognizing two stellar individuals.
I'll yield my time and open town council or community comment to you. I'll yield my time and open town council or community comment to you.
So we have Bobby Moot and John Thompson here with us tonight. I wanna call them out and recognize them publicly for their effort. Deb Clifton is here as well, and those two young juniors have put together a program to assist seniors with technology. They volunteered at their time. They went above and beyond the call. Some of the comments that we got back were, "Very knowledgeable, still patient and poised, hard to believe they're only juniors at North Attleboro High School," right? "We are so grateful for all the help." Bobby and John came to us and put together a quick program of how to help seniors with technology and utilize it. They volunteered their time to hand, you know, one-on-one work with our seniors and anybody that was interested, and I just wanna say thanks to them and recognizing them for their contributions to North Attleboro and making it great, but also to our senior center and our library for sponsoring them and giving them the space to make this all happen, and we're very, very appreciative for what they've done. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. You're only junior, so you have one more year, you can do it again next year. So let's move on to confirmations. Measure twenty-five eighteen, confirmation of the appointment. Sandra McCory as the conservation administrator.
Come on up, Sandra. Our conservation chair was here earlier. She was here to testify with me to get your support for backing Sandra as our new conservation agent. Look, we conducted an exhaustive review of a number of candidates. We had, and conducted interviews with four candidates total for the conservation agent position that recently came open. I meet with the chair of the department, who does the interviews with me for any department head position that has an equivalent chair. Jess was there. Jess is a wetland scientist, right? That's what she does for a living. But we went through all of our candidates, and one stood out, clearly, head and shoulders above everybody else, knew exactly how, because of, and to let you know, Sandra applied, she was the clerk for the conservation commission earlier. So she was very familiar, but she talked about ways where she saw how we can improve it, improving customer focus and moving applications and getting everything in a forward momentum, but representing the town, right? Not only as the agent, but as an enforcement agent, but as a liaison to the conservation commission, and talking about where we can do better. She has a great understanding of how the process works. I'd ask for your support this evening for Sandra to be our next conservation agent.
Thank you, Mr. Borg. Mr. McCurry, would you like to address the council this evening?
I've been working in the conservation office for the past five years. I have, I worked under Shannon, who is a great mentor, and I did take classes at Mass DEP, 'cause she encouraged me to know what the regulations were going forward and working there, so I could play her backup when she was on vacation. She got more vacation than I did, so, yeah. You need somebody who can actually answer the questions at the window when things come in. I didn't apply when she left the position, you know, but after our second person left, I thought, you know, I will put my hand in, 'cause I can do this job, and I know I've helped to streamline things, digitize things, get things in a little bit more of a forward focus, thinking about the future and wanting things to be accessible to people, so...
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions?
I just said your resume is outstanding.
Thank you. I've been doing a lot.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Paul Colby. I'm a member of the historical commission, and I just wanted to say Sandra is our administrator and assistant, and I agree with everything Michael just said. She's fantastic. She put all of our stuff on a digital screen for us, so all of our stuff is no longer in the file cabinet. It's...
I'm not all there yet.
Not all there.
We're getting there.
I can't do that, 'cause I hope we're losing her, but she's still sticking around until Michael finds somebody else. So I'm glad that we have her, and I just wanted to say congratulations to Sandra.
Thank you, Mr. Colby. I'll take a motion.
I make the motion to approve Measure twenty-five dash zero-one-eight, confirmation of appointment of Sandra McCory as conservation administrator.
Second.
Any meaning, white man.
I'm giving it to Mr. Gregory.
All right.
All right, I got a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second of Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hear or none, all is fair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes, it's eight-zero. Welcome aboard.
Great, very good finish. A little off my mark.
Round the crowd. Next up, twenty-five twenty-two, confirmation of the appointment, Brian Butler, building commissioner.
Brian, come on up. Members of the council, this weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Mass Municipal Association Annual Conference up in Boston. Took in a number of speakers, took in a number of, and one of the classes that I sat in, it was a learning lab session, it was called Building Official's Impact on Public Safety in the South. A great speaker, and they talked about the importance of your building official, and probably not one of the most popular people in your community as well, but probably one of the most influential and has a huge impact on public safety. So I wanna call, and, you know, Mr. Butler came to us as an internal candidate, right? Within the bargaining unit. So there are certain rules and regulations that I have to follow, but he met all of those as an internal candidate for this position, which means you had to be qualified for the job and you had to be in the same department. So if there's a vacancy, you would be, you know, under the bargaining rules, you would have to move up. That's not why I'm here tonight. Brian, one day, went up and saw one of our facilities leaning over and into the road, Webster Mill. He was the acting building commissioner at that time. He got ahold of everybody here in Town Hall, he moved quickly and said, "Here's a public safety threat." He modernized how we are taking that office and moving it forward. He mobilized all of the departments here, and that building came down. That building is down on the ground now. It's no longer a threat to safety, and we are working, and I'm hoping, I know Tony's gonna, it's a French one, I say, oh, look at, oh, he's like... I hope you got that on camera. But we are working very hard. We hope to have a solution for the Webster Mill problem, but he started, Brian started. Let me call your attention, you might have gone downtown and saw the scaffolding up over one of the sidewalks. Folks came in, saw this happening, worked with Brian, they got that up in place. Brian brings to the table years of experience, you have his resume. He's partially completed all the requirements for the building commissioners course, right? We're in discussions with the Commonwealth, should you confirm his appointment as the building commissioner tonight, 'cause this is a department head position, to figure out where, he would have to do the one last course that he has, right? Or whether he needs to start over again? Regardless, he meets all the qualifications to be in this position now. He and I have had a number of discussions on the importance of moving this process forward, of when you have folks that come in and apply for permits, what our responsibility is, how we have to do this and move that. We've had a number of discussions on responding to issues that come in through Big Red Three-One-One, and focusing on customer service, right? It's a top priority for Brian. Brian is a great team player. He understands the vision of what we'd like to do with this department and how to move this town forward. It's not gonna be an easy job. Right now, he's doing all the work. We have no other inspector there. And he's punching and jabbing above his weight class right now. So I'd ask for your support for Mr. Butler to be the building commissioner for North Attleboro.
Thank you, Mr. Borg. Mr. Butler, would you care to address the council this evening?
Well, I'd just like to thank everybody for the opportunity. It's something that I do look forward to. If you get a chance to read the resume, I mean, I've had thirty-something years more of experience in the construction field. I've been an inspector since two thousand and six for another town, my hometown of Norton, and at times have served there as an interim building commissioner, and in the last year has been your local inspector, and for a couple of periods of time, your interim commissioner. I think I'm just at a point in my career that this is where I wanna be in life. I'm all about public safety, I'm all about being the inspector. I'm one of those guys that like to consider myself being helpful. If you wanna come down and talk about the permitting process, I'd be more, you know, or I should say for guidance. And that goes along with, you know, with the building codes and any other questions that anybody might have, and I think over the year, if you don't know me, I think I've proven that. And that's what I'm about. And I'm also, I'll say this freely, I'm about treating everybody the same. I treat everybody fairly. I don't go outside of that box. That's who I am. That's who I'm about. I've had the opportunity here to work with North Attleboro in the last year, and we've had, made some couple of major decisions. And I found myself with some comfortability with the other departments and the upper management. You know, taking down a building like that, you know, it isn't as easy as it sounds. There is a due process, and there's a way to do it to protect the town. And I can say, like I say, with some of the other departments, the upper management, how they worked and how they did things is, you know, that's part of my decision how I wanna move forward with the end of my career, and how they acted, and it would be a, you know, it'd be a privilege to work for the town, and that's up to you guys. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Butler. Any comments, Mr. Curry?
Good as far as... So just one briefly.
Sure.
We on council have kinda pushed to help people get to yes, even if you have to say no, but if you do this.
Yep.
And just for the record, you were recently at my house. For a, I had a wood stove put in.
Yep.
And I was getting the final sign off, and the last thing I needed to do was get an eighteen-inch safety mat in front of the stove to protect my floor. I bought an eighteen-inch mat off Amazon, called for the inspection. I failed. I failed.
To one vote.
Didn't see that were coming.
I failed because what I had was not, was not sufficient. It was the right size, but it didn't have what was necessary to keep my house safe. We have since bought another one, had it installed, I have to call to get re-inspected. But when I picked up the old one, my floor was burnt out to me. So, and you let me know exactly what I had to do, and how to go about the process, and to just call for a quick re-inspection, no issues. It was a no, but with the here's how you get to yes, and that's what we're looking for with council service.
That's what I'm about.
And I was highly impressed so much that I actually called Mr. Borg.
I'm not a, I'm not a monster, I'm not one of these guys that sit in this position and hold this position and say, "You're gonna do it because I'm the building commissioner." It's not like that with me. And anybody that knows me or gets to know me knows that that's not what I'm about.
Yeah, I was just gonna say I'm excited about the hire, had the privilege of working with Mr. Butler on several projects that I'm actively working on now in town, and he's been a delight to work with. However, I will say this.
Great.
I hope you have had transparent and open conversations about ensuring you have the resources you need to be successful, because I think it's not sustainable for you to do it all by yourself, and I don't want you to leave, I want you to stay. And I think you'll get burnt out if one of the presumption that one man can do it all. It's just not possible. So hopefully during the interview process, you're kinda saying, you know, if I become the building commissioner, I'm excited about it, but I need A, B, and C.
Absolutely, absolutely. And no one person can do it by themselves.
For the council, sir, we did advertise a inspector position, so we wanted to fill that quickly.
Interviewing on Friday.
Outstanding.
All right, thank you. I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve Measure twenty-five dash zero-two-two, confirmation of appointment of Brian Butler as the building commissioner.
Second. Motion, Mr. Simmons, a second, Mr. Cassello. Sorry, discussion, discussion. Hear or none, all is fair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight-zero.
It's okay if I leave and go have some dinner.
As long as no one can.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
Bring some back, bring some back.
Let's move on. Finance committee, twenty-five twenty-nine, authorization to finance dispatch console replacement. Project with free cash repurposed from the emergency operations center upgrade project, capital improvement program stabilization funds. Mr. Simmons?
Finance committee met, excuse me, finance committee met last week, approved this unanimously, talked to both the police chief and the fire chief, and this is a matter of public safety. If it isn't just a desk, it's more than that. It's the whole system, and if it goes down, they have to rely on handheld radios, which are wildly ineffective. It's been something that they've been, it has been in the capital program before. It is being moved up because it got worse quickly, and they started having a hard time finding parts, and the recent parts that they bought were on eBay. So if there's a way that we can avoid buying public safety parts on eBay, it was critical to fund this. This was already in the capital improvement program. We did ask that question as to, you know, why is it all of a sudden an emergency? It's not all of a sudden, because it has been in the process of being replaced, but it is now critical that it be taken out of order and moved up. So we did support this unanimously. Both Chief Quaid and Chief Coleman gave pretty compelling testimony that this was vital to officer safety, fire safety, and citizen safety.
Thanks for sharing this. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve Measure twenty-five dash zero-two-nine, authorization to finance dispatch console replacement project with free cash repurposed from emergency operations center upgrade project, capital improvement stabilization program funds in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars.
Sir, I have a motion, Mr. Simmons, a second. Mr. Donovan, is there any discussion?
There is one more item that I did want to address. The E O C C upgrade is where some of this money's coming from. That project has not been done. That is a project that we had approved a couple of years ago. There was then problems with the H V A C system at the police station, so this project was put on hold until that was resolved. It's possible they might be looking at another direction as to how to tackle that project. So the funds were available to do this, which is higher priority for them than the E O C upgrades. Thank you.
Gould?
I just wanna say five-hundred thousand is a lot, but it makes complete sense because it's public safety. The equipment was put in the nineties when people were using floppy disks and pagers, so in support. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? I have a motion and a second. No additional discussion? Hear or none, all is fair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Both pass eight-zero. Thank you. Measure twenty-five thirty, Mr. Simmons on.
Yes, this is an authorization, actually, I'm just gonna make a motion first, and then I'll go ahead and scrap it. I make a motion to approve Measure twenty-five dash zero-three-zero, authorization to transfer F Y twenty-five free cash in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-seventy-six dollars to the school department for chapter seventy differential.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second from Mr. Donovan. Discussion?
So the school budget came in last year. We fully funded their request. When the final budget came out, chapter seventy, which is the school funding, was two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-seventy-six dollars higher than we anticipated it being. Based on conversations between the school department and town manager board, he had indicated to them that if the money came back over, it would be returned to the school in projects, so they could complete projects. With that extra money, it was, it was designed for education, and it's being returned to them for projects, but not added to the base, the base budget amount. The finance committee voted unanimously to support this transfer. Thank you.
Projects, not projects, not people, so they're not, can't use this money to hire anybody, just to do other projects, unless, I just wanna make that clear.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, do we know what it's being used for? It's being transferred to capital improvement, and then we're gonna use it for schools? I see a school committee member, maybe he knows.
No, it's made available for any other project deficit.
So a capital project for the schools?
Could be capital, it has no...
But doesn't have to be?
It doesn't have to be.
So which account is it going to?
It's going to be as an article existing as, in this measure of 294, that they can draw down.
So, we'll authorize them to spend out of free cash?
Yes.
I would just, I'm not against that, just be curious to know what they're gonna spend it for. Is it a budget deficit?
They've not told, or made any indication what they've spent. I know I've had a conversation with the school committee chair, there was a curriculum issue that they were looking to potentially fund. I know they announced that they had a structural deficit in the athletics at around $150,000, so this might be a good stopgap funding for them, and they wouldn't, you know, if there's a, I know they just had a pipe burst, but we're dealing with that with facilities and through potentially capital projects for that. But it has no constraints on it, but it's not in their baseline budget.
I mean, I'm gonna vote for it, I would just like to ask them the question, what they're gonna, I mean, I've heard that band uniforms, that's what they're need of, I definitely support that.
They've asked for band uniforms, that was a capital project that was submitted to us, right, and that's under consideration.
And I've also heard that students have to pay for parking at the school?
I don't know if they're gonna use that for parking fees, I would probably say they're not. But I don't need to put, you know, I put no constraints on how they spend this money.
It is, I think, I think it's fairly unorthodox to do something like this, honestly. Also, because the town manager supports it, and the Finance Committee supports it, it will go towards good use, I'll support it anyway, I would say this is pretty unorthodox. My initial skeptical reaction was, hey, if the school budget, if the state aid came in lower than anticipated, would the school have to cover that their own, or would the town?
So, Council President, I mean, that's a great point, if you would allow me the opportunity to just kind of provide some context.
Sure.
So, this was a discussion, because the Chapter 70 money came at such a differential level, right? And my argument, and it still is today, and it has not changed, is that every department should come before the town manager and make their best case for what budget they need in the upcoming year. Unlike the legislature at the Commonwealth, I don't get a grace period, right? I have, I'm bound by the charter to bring before you a balanced budget proposal, right? I do. I put that in. And the same token is, if Chapter 70 was less, would the schools be wanting to give back money? I don't think so, I don't think we'd even be asking for it, because we'll make the assumption that the budget they're asking for is the budget they need. The schools, and even at the MMA conference and the governor's comments on, you know, Chapter 70, and there's a potential increase in Chapter 70 in the House One budget that was just released. Departments need to come make their budget case before me. This was a one-time deal. They do, the superintendent did announce that he had a structural deficit and something, maybe this can fill the gap for him. I made an arrangement and a deal with the school committee chair to say, would I consider this? I said, as long as the town council votes to support it, I would have no problem putting it forward.
Thank you. Did I already get a motion and a second? I think I did. All right. Any more discussion? Here are none, all's fair to say, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion pass eight to zero. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve Measure 2025-033, authorization to transfer FY25 free cash in the amount of $3.2 million to the capital improvement stabilization account.
All right, that's okay. We just did Measure 2025-33. We'll go back to the other one, so I have a motion for Measure 2025-33, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
Finance Committee met, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
Finance Committee met on this last week. This was part of the free cash discussion, which Finance Committee already met on, and we have briefed back to you. This is part of that $3.2 million to move into capital improvement program stabilization account, so we can start earning interest before we spend it on items that we know are upcoming. And it was a unanimous.
Very good. I have a second. Already, is there any discussion?
Mr. School? Just to clarify, we're still on track to pay a million in OPEB?
Right now, barring any massive snowstorms, right, which would change all the calculations, but we're looking close to $1.3 million for OPEB this year.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Here are none, all's fair to say, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That motion passes eight to zero. Next up, 2025-32.
Yes. Make a motion to approve Measure 2025-032, authorization to repurpose $28,786 funds for the Martin Boiler Project to be used to fund the Roosevelt Hot Water Heater Replacement Project to the school department.
Second.
Finance Committee met on this, approved it unanimously. These are funds left over from the Martin Boiler Project, which is nearing completion with a remaining balance of about $165,864.61. That project, as soon as it's closed out, we're gonna repurpose $28,786 of that leftover amount, which will allow for the timely completion of the Roosevelt Hot Water Heater Replacement Project without impacting other capital improvement programs that are ongoing or in line, as this was not new money, and it was money that had previously been authorized to be spent on something similar with the school department. Finance Committee unanimously recommended this.
All right, thank you. Simmons, any question on this one? School?
When is the project slated to be done, the Martin Boiler Project?
Project was completed on Friday.
Was completed on Friday, so there's, so that remaining balance is accurate?
The 165? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the hot water heater.
No.
The boiler, the boiler is installed, the only thing remaining on that project is to install some controls for the boiler.
Okay.
With that substantial amount of money left, we will not run close to that amount. So.
So, what's the plan to rescind the appropriation for about $140,000 when we're done?
Once we're done, then we'll be calling our Linda specials.
Thank you.
Yep. School? Cover that when we come to it. I have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Here are none, all's fair to say, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Authorization to transfer $22,945 accumulated interest from sewer retained earnings to sewer INI stabilization.
Make a motion to approve Measure 2025-035, authorization to transfer $22,945 accumulated interest from the sewer earnings to the, from the sewer retained earnings to the sewer INI stabilization fund. Finance Committee voted unanimously in favor of this. Again, these are ratepayer funds, they are not real estate tax dollars, and they are controlled by the Board of Public Works.
Any second, please. I have a motion, Simmons. Second, Mr. Donovan, it's okay. Is there any discussion?
I would just add that this was just a book ledger maneuver. The funds were already there, it just needed to be put into the proper account, and that's what this motion is doing. There's no expenditure whatsoever, it's just putting the interest that was earned in the funds into the proper.
Very good. I have a motion and a second, is no further discussion? All's fair to say, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Passes eight to zero. 2538.
Make a motion to approve Measure 2025-38, appropriation request for the use of FY25 retained earnings from the Comcast PEG Act for North TV information technology equipment replacement in the amount of $23,031.70.
Second. I have a motion from Simmons, a second from Mr. St. Pierre. Is there any discussion? Here are none, all's fair to say, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Passes eight to zero. 2539.
Make a motion to approve Measure 25-39, authorization to transfer $37,042.94 from the reserve account to the insurance premiums account to pay the insurance premium for the town's insurance policies. Mr. Board, would you mind taking over on this one?
Sure, absolutely, sir. The town has been involved with its current broker and property liability providers in discussions since April of last year on managing the correct and right balance for our deductibles for all of our buildings. We finally came to an agreement. The result after moving our deductibles up, and the thought process was, because the town sits on a substantial general stabilization fund of around $8 million plus now close to, with the addition of the $3.2 million in capital improvement stabilization, another close to $7 million, so we have enough resources to take a look at our insurance premiums. We did that, and it still resulted in a net increase that we did not have budget for. So, we need an additional $37,000 to cover. It also includes a cyber policy upgrade that we're looking at, as well as coverage for the Afghan painting over in the police station.
Grab up that one.
Well, we haven't, sir.
Help the press isn't remembering that one, if we have any debates, we don't have that.
I'll talk about anything you want, but not the Afghan.
Its value has gone down just that way.
Sure, sure. Russian art, not being one.
I make a motion to approve Measure 20. Did I already do that?
Yeah. Sign a motion and a second. So, is there any discussion on this one? Here are none, all's fair to say, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? That passes eight to zero. Next one is 2025-40.
Make a motion to approve Measure 2025-040, authorization to repurpose funds from the town clerk CIP digitization project to purchase office furniture in the amount of $11,485.83.
Second. A motion and a second, Simmons and Donovan.
So, Finance Committee voted unanimously on this. This is leftover funds from the CIP digitization project. And one of the other things that was happening at the same time as this is the offices were moving around to make it flow, to make same offices share the same space, so the same people could cover multiple different offices, kind of increase efficiency, increase multi-use of individuals, if they can handle more than one office. Part of the problem there is that the furniture doesn't necessarily fit where it has to go in the new offices. This is leftover funds from an already approved CIP project. And Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this measure. I can tell you that the elections office is one of the offices getting office furniture, and having served in that office, much needed.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons, I did have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? School?
I don't see Pat here. Do we know what all was digitized? Was it marriage license, dog license?
I can get that for you, sir, I don't have it offhand, but the project is complete.
The town bylaws.
It was bylaws, it was the E-code, it was part of that, so there was a number of things. Well, I'll get that, sir, and I'll send that to you.
That was a great project, so well done.
All right, any further discussion? Here are none, all's fair to say, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. We'll go through our committee updates, economic growth, sustainability.
Nothing at this time.
Bylaw. Shannon's not here.
Nothing at this time.
Rules, nothing at this time.
School, can you wrap?
Maybe just touch on what Mike briefly mentioned, just so you're aware, there was a pipe that did burst at Martin School, and they had to remove some lockers, and they did discover that there was some longstanding mold and asbestos as well.
It was the Roosevelt, Roosevelt School.
Did I say?
It's in Martin.
It's been a long night. And I don't have a number on how much it cost them. I just want you guys to be aware.
Thank you, keep an eye on that one. Did you get the Torus Gonest to share that with us?
Thank you. I can forward you the email, Johnson.
Communication, public participation, engagement.
Nothing at this time.
I skipped over the school building committee, Larry mentioned it. I would say the next public forum is February 13th, most likely at 6 o'clock at the North Adler High School auditorium. I think we heard earlier tonight that there's gonna be a tour beforehand, so we'll make sure that is publicized on the town website and other places, right? We'll try to make sure we get that information out, so folks are aware. And we have local emergency planning.
Just, do we have any idea when we're gonna have a better estimate on the price breakdown? The thousand, I understand, was really rough.
I don't have an estimate on when the numbers will be finalized. I know we're in that process right now. Mr. Simmons does have an estimate on that, and since in April, it's good. Glad he was.
I do not, somebody else does, April.
Thank you. Local emergency planning.
Meeting on the 29th.
On the 29th.
At 10:00 AM.
Hazardous mitigation plan meeting. Please, we'll come in, share your ideas, learn more about how to help us prepare for emergencies here in town.
Excellent, thank you, guys. In the honor of the committee, I have nothing to report, though I'm expecting to be on court in the next week or two, so hopefully we'll have some sophisticated stuff soon. New business, 2025-41. Acceptance of the alteration of the layout proportion of Plain Street right-of-way is shown on a plan entitled "Street Layout Plan, Plain Street, North Adler, Mass., prepared for the Ground Rules LLC by Rizor Engineering Company, dated October 25, 2024, and the discontinuance proportion of the right-of-way parcel aid contains 17,506 square feet, more or less." Mr. Board, are you seeking referral? Or is this, we vote in support?
Just before we get started, I have to accuse myself from this measure and the next measure, please.
You got it.
Thank you.
Council President, we welcome a referral. I think economic development could be a committee or potentially financed, depending on how you want to see it, but.
As we discussed, we don't need to refer this.
Basically, don't. Look, I apologize that Mr. Halliwell's not here, he got tagged for jury duty. And he was, he is a jury member, so he got picked. I'm gonna do my best to explain what is happening here, right? So, I'm gonna use pictures. So, I'd ask you to look at in your handout in the measure.
So, anybody think they're gonna wanna refer this, just wanna, maybe you have it pre-putted here?
I don't think it's that complicated. Here's what we're asking.
I don't think we're gonna need to, we just wanna throw that out there. Sooner that you think you can refer it, chime in, so that we can kind of move on, so I don't want to duplicate efforts.
Okay, so there's two parts to this, there's two measures of what we're trying to do, right? We have a piece of town-owned land that's not on the current tax rolls, right? We received this piece of land years ago, when old Plain Street was readjusted and the interstate was built. You have a recommendation, and I would just, I would call your attention to this particular picture, right? Because this is the best one that I can explain it on, right? So, you see the yellow, two lines, that's old Payne Road, that's where it used to go. Plain Street, I'm sorry, I just remember Payne Road from somebody saying that earlier. So, Plain Street. Look at the green triangle box, that is town property, there's nothing there, right? We've got it, it's not on the tax rolls. We have a proposal to carve out and create that parcel, right? That is the one slide that you have here from the locust map on the upper-hand right corners, that's what that really says. Yep. What we're asking to do is establish this parcel, right? That you, the town council, can establish this parcel. And then in the second measure, to authorize me to put it out to bid, so it can be procured and put on the tax rolls. That's the easiest way that I can explain it. What do you want to add to it?
I was just going to add, if anyone had any questions, I was the one who brought that plan forward, so I'd be happy to answer them. Go with the zoning be on the property. Why, is my question. Two questions.
Whatever the existing, I don't know what the existing zoning is, but whatever the existing zoning, that would apply, do you remember, know how to handle?
I-60, industrial.
Okay. And somebody wants to purchase it?
Yep.
To expand on a piece of property that they own, potentially, but I can't sell it to an individual, it has to go through the bid process, so we would put it out to bid.
Gotcha.
So just to explain, the yellow road is no longer there. It's the red one.
That's correct.
Okay. So the.
So it was adjusted.
The triangle, so you can see that. Okay.
So what you're, that would establish that parcel. The first move is to establish that. The second measure is to authorize me to put that out to bid. It's currently not on the tax rolls. We receive no tax revenue from this. If there was any improvement that were done on this particular site, and there potentially could be, we'd go through all the normal processes, through the planning board, zoning, everybody that would normally be done in that, and then it would be assessed and put on the tax rolls as a revenue generating property, which is currently generates zero today.
Dan.
And this is in the summary, but just so that it's on the record, this did have to go through a public hearing with the Board of Public Works as rural commissioners, and they did approve that.
Okay, thank you for that. Good to hear that.
And how big is the parcel?
17,000 square feet.
Mark.
What's the value estimated?
I don't have that yet. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'll get that to you.
Would it be a buildable lot?
Yes, we do believe it would be a buildable lot, but still subject to all of the requirements of zoning.
On its own, if somebody bought it who's not in the butter, it's still a buildable lot?
No.
Only if the butter rises?
Only if the butter rises.
Anybody have questions?
Again, if you want to refer this, we'd happily entertain and.
You know what the intent is, the project, on the property? Can you speak to that? Yes. So the intent is to combine those two parcels into one and have, the way the parcel currently sits is not as conducive to building as it would be as a whole.
However, I would still say this is subject to the RFP process.
Yeah. Okay. Well, sorry, go ahead.
So we carved this parcel out, so we still own next to that parcel?
That's correct.
Who paid for the survey?
The potential.
The potential buyer.
Bidder, bidder.
Okay. Good.
All right. Any other discussion on this one? I'll take a motion to approve or to our sort. Problem. Don't leave, don't advise me, man. What do you think?
Yeah, so here's my thing. So I still have unanswered question. Questions are, why do we still have land that's landlocked? I understand this benefits the potential person that wants to buy it, but I would make them purchase all of it. What do we mean additional land like though? That's still not on tax rolls. Is my question.
Is it separated by the ramp? Like, it's over the 95 highway, right? So it's, I think there's a concrete block. Is that what separates that parcel? No?
Looks like there's still additional land that they could claim as well. 37-275, if I'm looking at the illustration now, right?
If I remember correctly, from the Board of Public Works meeting, that is already owned by a private individual.
Oh, okay.
And that, I believe, is the impetus for buying this piece of land.
Okay.
Because it's not, it's not technically, I'm going from memory here, so please don't hold me to this entirely. There's a tiny point at the end, but it's very small. It doesn't provide him with enough frontage. I do believe it's technically not landlocked though. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe that's correct.
But I believe that's correct. This was a big discussion with the, and I'm not speaking for the Board of Public Works. I just happened to watch the meeting.
We'd happily entertain if you want to refer this, I think, because then we'll have Mark Halliwell and the Board of Public Works before that. So an appropriate subcommittee could take a look at this.
Charlie, you guys, someone feels strong about it, make a motion. Either way.
Where would it go?
Economic development.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation.
I don't know.
I'll just take the motion.
So there we go. All right. Let's move forward. Someone make a motion.
I make a motion, it's approved, right?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve measure 2025 dash 041, acceptance of the alteration of the layout proportion of Plain Street right of way as shown on a plan entitled quote-unquote "Street Layout Plan, Plain Street, North Adamour, Mass., prepared for ground rules LLC by Riser Engineering Company dated October 25, 2024, and the discontinuance of proportion of the right of way quote-unquote parcel A, which contains 17,506 square feet more or less.
Second. Motion. We're still going to a second. If there are none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Borg, we got 2025-42. I won't read it. What's the difference here?
Is it your grant media authority to click up the property app to bid?
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept measure, sorry, 2025 dash 042, request to transfer a tax titled property of proposed parcel A of Plain Street as described in measure 2025 dash 041 from treasurer as the tax title custodian to the town council for general municipal purposes. For the purpose of conveyance, authorize the town manager to conduct a sale utilizing Mass General Law Chapter 30B, Section 60.
I got a motion for Mr. Dove in a second. If Mr. St. Pierre, is there any discussion? If they're not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Imposed any extensions? That motion passes eight to zero. Fortunately, due to Yep, we're back. Thanks, everybody. Five-minute recess is completed. Here we are, 9:05 p.m. Moving on to the next item of our agenda, measure 2025-43, authorization to pay FY24 invoices for AT&amp;T. Mr. Borg.
Council President.
Voting this off the floor for $124.
Below the $20,000 threshold, right? But this cost FY, Mr. Military, can tell you all about it real quick?
Yeah, we were testing something with AT&amp;T, which actually honestly didn't pan out, but they decided that they didn't want to send paper bills and allow me access to their portal until more recently, and then I finally caught up with everything, and that's why we're here today.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions, discussion on this one? If they're not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve measure 2025 dash 043, authorization to pay FY24 invoices for AT&amp;T First Net Services for the IT department in the amount of $124,000.
No.
$124,000, $27 cents.
They'd love that, sir. We can refer to that. I have a motion in a second. I don't have a second. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion for Mr. Simmons in a second. Mr. Donovan, is there any discussion? If they're not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose extensions, capacity zero. Next up, 2025-44.
Make a motion to approve measure 2025 dash 044, authorization to pay FY24 invoices for Metasource LLC for the IT department in the amount of $2,525,75.
Second. I have a motion for Mr. Simmons in a second. Is there any discussion? It's really a lot. Less than one there already.
Very less than one moment. This actually goes back to Paul Stanley, the town clerk had done. This is the online version of what they had to store all of that stuff. We've been going through contracting and things are kind of messed up between when last fiscal year, this fiscal year started, and we're just going to describe it that way now. That's what this is.
Thank you very much.
What's the five-second question?
Yes.
So this is the stuff that the clerk saved. Is it going to be stored on the cloud?
It's in the cloud, yes. They have the hard copies that are required to keep, but there's also the cloud for access and to be able to do the things that they need to do.
Thanks.
All right, there's no further questions. I think I already had the motion in a second. So all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose any extensions? Passes eight to zero. Town manager performance evaluation, which I.
Thank you.
Do not have handy. It's Borg. It's been, it's been a day, guys. Yeah, why don't we go, move on to the next one? I'll pull up the performance evaluation. Summary that I had is really short. We'll skip that one and we'll move on to item. Thank you, guys. This is measure 2025-45, adoption guidelines, policy for town council conduct, social media and community engagement. This one came from Councilor Sipogan. So I'll yield the floor to you. If you'd like, you can kind of walk through your rationale, what you think.
Yeah. I actually have a PowerPoint, so we'll wait for that for a second, Karen. Or you can keep it up there. It's beautifully not beautiful, but, all right. So the purpose of this measure is to establish guidelines for three things. One, social media conduct to ensure transparency, professionalism, and accuracy when engaging with the public online. Two, community engagement, encourage ethical practices addressing community concerns and sharing information. And third, email communication, mandate the use of official council emails, email addresses for town business to ensure compliance with public record laws. The key elements of this measure, before I go into the case study that I brought forward, is one, the social media guidelines. Like I said, clarify the distinction between personal and official communication. Prohibit the use of town symbols such as the town seal or language implying official representation without authorization. And encouraging sharing official meeting recordings, because we have, or summaries to address community concerns factually. Two, community engagement best practices, promote addressing reoccurring concerns during the counselor comments portion of meetings instead of lengthy online discussions. Provide links to meeting recordings or FAQs to ensure residents have access to accurate information. Three, email usage for council business. We require all counselors to conduct all official business via designated council email addresses. Refrain from using personal emails for council matters to comply with public record laws and ensure transparency. So because one of the issues that I saw happening often in the social media realm of things are things being placed out there that are not always factual or more opinion-based based on things that were being discussed. So I thought, want to use a case study. So for tonight, I have a case study. If we'll go to the next slide, from a post actually that Mark, you actually did recently, actually about this meeting and this particular measure. In the post, you say, "How do you know you're on the right track when the powers-to-be feel so threatened by trans..."
How is that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How is that be?
Oh, thank you so much. "Powers that be feel so threatened by transparency and accountability that they try to silence elected officials on Facebook and silence free speech. When your push for an elderly tax exemption tied to the high school vote gets people talking and makes it onto the council agenda," and so on and so forth. And there, if you have the time to read it. So the reason, next slide, I identified this particular post as my case study, is one, premature discussion of official agenda items. The agenda for the upcoming meeting is public. However, discussing its contents or encouraging debate on social media before the meeting undermines the council's role as a deliberative body. Such actions risk creating the perception of bias or predetermined positions before the meeting occurs, potentially violating ethical standards. Two, framing as free speech suppression. The post frames the proposed measure as an attack on free speech, which misrepresents its intent. The measure seeks to clarify the distinction between personal and official capacities and ensures accountability not to restrict personal opinions or advocacy. And then third, misinformation or misrepresentation risks. Statements about silencing elected officials can mislead the public and create an unnecessary distrust, especially when the measure is focused on transparency and maintaining professionalism. Next slide, please. Why this example highlights the need for this measure? One, ensuring accuracy in public communication. Misleading capitalizations like silencing free speech undermine the council's credibility and trust. The proposed measure ensures counselors engage responsibly and accurately. Two, preventing pre-meeting public bias. The open meeting law exists to preserve the integrity of deliberations. Social media discussions about agenda items before meetings risk violating the spirit of this law and diminishing the value of public discussions during meetings. And then third, reinforcing trust with residents. Sharing the meeting agenda is acceptable. However, combining it with personal commentary risks framing council actions inaccurately, creating division. Clear guidelines prevent such occurrences. So finally, in my conclusion for this case study, this example illustrates the importance of the proposed guidelines in maintaining professionalism, trust, and the integrity of the council's work. By adopting this measure, the council can, A, protect against potential open meeting law violations, B, ensure transparency and clarity in public communication, but most importantly, uphold trust and credibility in the community. So before I end, I'd like to conclude, this measure is not about limiting free speech or adding unnecessary rules. It is a proactive step to ensure professionalism, transparency, and trust between us counselors and the community. By adopting this policy, North Adamour will join other towns in leading by example, demonstrating a commitment in leading by example, demonstrating a commitment to ethical governance and clear communication.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
On the show, yes.
I strongly disagree with any attempt to silence speech we disagree with. That's a dangerous path. Our council has fostered an unhealthy expectation of conformity. We've become an echo chamber. In the real world, people disagree, and that's healthy. Why this policy? Why now? Why does it apply only to the council and not to the town as a whole? No other council in the United States of America, to my knowledge, has a policy like this, specifically speaking to their council members. Yes, towns have policies that speaks to officials appointed and elected, not to a specific body. If you're going to make a policy, make it applied across the board. You might as well call this the "don't want to see Councilor Gould's Facebook" policy. You're welcome to block me. This feels like one counselor is being unfairly targeted right before an election. One counselor has consistently engaged the public on social media. We use that counselor's case study. Instead of restricting speech, we should be encouraging it. Let's not forget, we've already disabled public comments on the town's Facebook. This policy could expose the town to liability. The Supreme Court in Bond v. Floyd unanimously held elected officials criticizing the government are exercising protected free speech. Legislatures cannot silence or punish elected officials for expressing their views, especially on matters of public interest and statements criticizing public policy and its implementation must be similarly protected. That's the Supreme Court's clear precedent. I'd exercise extreme caution in trying to say what people can or cannot say. And by saying, "We're not going to let the community speak about things we're going to talk about during our meetings," this should be something we should be encouraging. Even if we disagree with the people that came tonight, let's hear them out. Let's hear people out. That's all I'm saying. It's okay to disagree. I'd suggest we table this or take no action on it.
Thank you. Are we seeking, you can respond in another one or seeking a referral potentially.
So with that, yes. First, as I've said, I think a few times throughout what my mission for this was, is that it's not limiting free speech, and we're not saying that people can comment, and we're not saying that you can comment. What I'm trying to say is, say it factually. Represent it properly. Don't misrepresent it, because I myself have read some of the things on Facebook, not only by yourself, by the way. This wasn't targeted just to you. The bantering back and forth between different counselors, the misinformation about some of the hot topics that we're talking about. We have counselor comments for a purpose. We should be utilizing that there. We actually record every one of these meetings. We should utilize those recordings to present factual information out to our public and not scare tactic them with misinformation that has been out there, Mark. It has. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a motion to refer Measure 2025-045 regarding the adoption of guidelines or policy for discussion for town council conduct on social media, community engagement, and email usage to the Rules Subcommittee for further discussion and next steps.
Second. All right, I have a motion from Mr. Logan, a second. From Mr. Donovan. Sorry, her first, sorry. To refer to rules. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, just like to say, I think this is a great first step. I think I'd be very interested to hear what the Rules Subcommittee has to say. I will agree with Councilor Gould on one thing, that I think it should be considered as a potential town-wide policy. I know MMA recommends a code of conduct for elected and appointed boards. So I think this is probably a good first step. It's a step in the right direction, not, uh, not the final. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Just quickly, in terms of making this a town-wide policy, I think we run into the charter where we don't have control of the town employees, Town Manager Board does.
Your point?
We could certainly recommend, the Rules Committee could certainly recommend the town adopt the same policy. As Chair of the Rules Committee, I would ask Councilor Slubogen, can you come forward with any, um, other communities' policies, specifically communities that may have faced a First Amendment challenge, and how we address the First Amendment nature, whether it be separating oneself from a personal Facebook page to a town council Facebook page? What different things make the effect? I think any time you talk about speech, you have to be careful. However, there are certainly allowable regulations of speech, and I know that's what you're going for. I look forward to hearing more at the Rules Subcommittee.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. So I have a motion in a second to refer this policy. Certainly, we have a measure that's associated with it. And the expectation would be, you guys would come back to us with probably a new, same measure number, but there would be changes potentially made to that. Good discussion. I would say, yeah, let's, I agree. In the past, I've been, I've been hesitant to adopt something like this. I wish that, you know, we weren't in a situation where I think I agree there should be something, the very least, guidelines for councils in terms of like, the best way to, not the best way, but, uh, just, just, just different, different methods, I think, that would, that would be effective in terms of communicating with the public without putting undue strain on this body itself. That's what I, that's what I'm concerned about, is like the undue strain of being put on this body, potentially by some of the staff and other members of the administration. So maybe that would be something that could come under this.
And just, if you don't mind, real fast. Again, as I stated, like, this isn't to silence. This isn't to stop people from sharing information. Most importantly, I do feel like that is what's amazing about having social media, is it's a free opportunity to give factual information. You know, already I have, there's four towns at the top that I've done the research for, that they are, and more towns are doing this, because social media, although not new to us, is still new to a lot of government needs. So this is, but most, if not all, are saying exactly the same thing, which is, there just need to be guidelines. It's not putting a big padlock on your mouth and telling you you can't speak. But if you are an elected official, doing it properly, doing it factually, doing it transparently, doing it professionally, and that's it. So I look forward to the conversation.
Give your hand up. Thank you. Mr. Shul.
Yeah, it just certainly feels like I'm being targeted. The PowerPoint had my post there. I don't.
That was just the most recent one, to be honest.
I don't see anything that I've said publicly that wasn't actually supported. I have been commented by another counselor, "Hey, could you, I don't think this language is appropriate." And you know what? I took a hard look at it, and I agreed, and I changed it. And it wasn't something like egregious, like, like, you know, we, you know, let's, let's.
I know, but I was just kind of curious. Were you, were you speaking of the council when you had that picture at the lodge over there? Was that supposed to be us?
That was whoever was proposing the measure, and the powers-to-be. Who puts out the agenda? Who approves the agenda? Who's targeting Councilor Gould? I'm trying to speak, and apparently people have problems with me trying to speak. I wish they would come to me.
Was there?
One counselor has come to me, and I changed it in response to him coming to me.
I don't want to go back.
So if anyone else comes to me, it's not worth it.
It's just interesting, with the agenda item that I think that was talking about, that was supposed to, was being held, you were being held back on, was on the agenda tonight. It was item G. So it wasn't, that wasn't rejected.
Because I had to file a citizen's petition?
No. No, Mark. You put, you sent me an email on Thursday before the meeting, and now it's on the agenda. And now it's on the... No, I didn't. You didn't give me time to even respond to you before you sent an email to the school committee during our last meeting, which is another example of improper behavior, to send an email during a live meeting. So I'm going to, I feel like this is a bad conversation for us to be having in public. Like I said before, it's a shame that we even have to have this conversation. I really wish we didn't. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I hope there isn't. At least, directly towards me. Hearing done. All those in favor to refer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? That motion passes seven to one. That says something. All right.
Yeah, echo chamber is what it says.
Pouring water.
Yes, I'm trying.
I take great offense to the echo chamber, the rubber stamp. I put a lot of work into what I do here. I put a lot of work into preparing for these meetings. I put a lot of work into doing my research. Put a lot of work in one-on-one time with Town Manager Board to make sure that I have the facts necessary before I come in here to make decisions. To be called a rubber stamp or an echo chamber is an insult. I respect my fellow counselors. It is we. We are working for the benefit of this town. We. There is no I. I know it's election time, but there's still no I. It's still we. And I just don't think echo chamber, rubber stamp, the powers-to-be, the language isn't helpful.
Neither is me of this.
All right. So that, that motion, that measure is referred to Finance Committee. Next up, as we're going backwards to the Town Manager Performance Evaluation. I'm going to be really brief. Tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Simmons momentarily. Don't you just leave? I'm ready to make a motion, that's all. So every, every year, and we're actually late doing this, and it's my fault, so I take the, take the blame for the delay in this. I apologize, or I'm going to work for that. So we'll make sure that we're right on cue, is true, and can do this again. So we're talking about the last fiscal year at this point in time. We, we were asked to, or I asked the council to rate Mr. Borg's performance based on following six items: service and support to the town council, budget preparation and administration, managerial skills, human resources management, public relations, customer service, and goal-setting and achievement. And we rated him based on the rating standards of exceeds, meets, exceeds performance expectations, meets performance expectations, needs improvements, or unsatisfactory performance. So Mr. Town Manager Board, the general consensus of the North Atterboro Town Council of your performance in fiscal year 24 is that you exceeded or met performance expectations across all evaluation criteria. I compiled the eight performance review forms from eight counselors and a summary paragraph from one counselor, and I put it into a packet which you should be in receipt of and was also submitted to HR. So I'll just say, you know, thank you very much, job well done, and if you, I encourage you to read the individual submissions from each one of the counselors, which everyone, your entire submission feedback was submitted to Mr. Borg. So we'll have that opportunity to, to consume that. I'm sure that you should feel free to reach out to counselors and talk about that feedback as well, of course, after the fact. So that is really all I had as far as the performance review. I'll pass it to you for a motion. Can also give people a chance to commit to a comment on it, but I'll pass it to you for a motion first. We have to actually look at his approved step increase as well as potentially an additional 2%. So did you?
So the, so the, the regular pursuit, uh, the regular contractual step increase is 2%. We have the ability to increase that by an additional 2% based on the performance evaluations. So I'm making the motion that we approve the additional 2% on top of the 2% contractual step for his performance. Second.
So for a total of a 4% increase, just the, kind of the max of that, his, the max of that, what's in, what's in the contract. So I have a motion and a second on that one. Do I have any discussion?
There was a point where we made a recommendation, like, he'd get an increase, but he opted not to take that at some point. Am I making that up, or did that happen?
I believe that did happen.
The first three months on the job.
Right.
That was, yeah, four and a half years ago.
Okay, all right.
There's been some inflation since then. Okay, excellent, excellent. So any other questions?
Yes.
Or comments? Mr. Shul.
What was the potential range for, wasn't there a range in the contract? Was it like zero to three, or zero?
2% would be, as far as our call, 2%.
The col.
You have to, yeah, cost of living increase rate. And then we have the option to go up to an additional 2% as councils. That was a...
Also, 2 is the max.
So the 2%, yeah.
The second.
Exactly. 4% is the max, 2% is the baseline.
Okay.
I would just like to point out that with, if the, if the additional 2% was, was approved, Town Manager Board's pay would still be on the low range of all of the surrounding communities when it comes to his position.
Don't give me, don't give me thought. He's doing a really good job. He's doing a tremendous job. We're lucky.
He's going on a deep...
That was just joking, like...
One other question?
Yes, please.
Did we ever get a self-evaluation?
I did not submit that.
Yep, I did not get a self-evaluation.
It's, it's forthcoming?
I can certainly send you one.
And then this is all public?
Yeah.
This will go on our website, like, our evaluation?
Good question. I don't know. I don't know, because it wasn't part of the, of the record. I don't believe that it's to be public. Usually it goes to the personnel.
Usually it goes to HR. I don't remember it being online, but I haven't, I'm not opposed to.
Yeah, if, if indeed that they should be published, then they will be. Let's, uh, make sure, but since they weren't in the...
I think the summary is.
Yeah, that's what we did in the past.
The summary of everyone's individual was public, and then everything else went into Town Manager Board's personnel file. I don't know if it's public. I don't know how to deal with that.
I will gladly look it up, and whatever it is, we'll comply.
If it has to be public, it has to be public.
No issues.
Yeah, of course. Happy to talk about it down to the, to the time. Maybe that should, that should be public. All right, so I have a motion and a second on that. 2% plus 2%?
Yes.
For the increase. Do I have any additional discussion?
I mean, no offense. I might suggest 1%. Times are tough. I, I think the unions are probably getting, what are the unions getting?
We're in negotiations now.
I think last time they got threes. I think three is fair in this economy.
Not necessarily against four percent, just throwing it out there.
All right, thank you. I personally, I support it. I mean, Mike's doing a great job. In my opinion, it deserves a four percent increase. Any other discussion though? All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That motion passes immensely. Thank you, Mr. Borg.
Thank you.
You pulled out a good word.
Yes, indeed. All right. I think that's everything, folks.
No, sir, you have I. Did you?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
You have G and H. I don't know what you handled on G. I mean, you talked about it.
I thought we were done with G, but if we need to go back into G, we can. Is there any further discussion on the special act? I feel like I'm exhausted.
I had made a motion and withdrawn. I'd be happy to make the motion again. That we table this, postpone this indefinitely.
Second.
It has to go back on as a petition.
Yes, sir.
I don't know. Do we need to... Because since we're going to have a public hearing on it, we need to...
So we can just postpone it to the public hearing?
There you go.
Because we have to talk about it in the public hearing.
So withdraw, yeah? So would that be postponed to a date, sir?
To the date that the public hearing is scheduled.
No, related to the six days.
So I make a motion that we postpone discussion of Special Home Act to reduce senior tax burden in the event of a positive vote for school debt exclusion to the public hearing on Counselor Gould's petition.
Second.
Friendly amendment, it would be very helpful to prepare this PowerPoint if we had a date certain. It would be a better presentation. I'd have better facts. Would be more informed.
If you want to...
Sir, you have the 10th of February, which is, if you want to align it, the Charter, the citizen's petition had the requisite number of signatures. You have the ability to schedule that within 60 days of receipt. That could go as far as March. You have one other citizen's petition from Mr. Celtica that is scheduled for the 10th...
Next meeting.
...of February. You received a second petition today, right, on a very similar topic, that you could combine those two and put together, which is allowed under the Charter rules. You could pick a date. If you're looking to pick a date, you could pick the... The 10th of February is already one public hearing, but we also have the preliminary budget presentation. You could move this into Subcommittee. You have that option as well to do. And the Charter clearly allows you to move it to Subcommittee, and then the Subcommittee come back and report the public hearing as a result of that. Your next opportunity, I think, after the 10th, would be the 24th of February, which there is... We're working budget, and I think we're just cleaning up any motions and agenda items that might remain. So if you're looking for a date, those are probably the first dates that... The 24th of February.
I would... Yeah. Does anybody want to refer that one? I mean, we have a motion on the table, on the floor, in the meeting. We have a motion in a second on the table. Sorry, any discussion?
Move to amend it to a date certain, February 10th.
I have a motion to amend. Do I have a second?
There's also already something from the 10th of February.
So that amendment didn't get a second?
So move to amend to a date certain, February 24th.
I would... So, do you have a second?
I guess I don't understand why you wouldn't have enough time to prepare a PowerPoint if you're pushing for the 10th. Either way, next meeting, you would be prepared regardless, so I don't understand.
Well, so you're going to do it the next meeting?
I don't plan agendas during council meetings, so I'm not trying to have that conversation right now.
It's hard for me to go on 48 hours' notice.
Understood, understood, understood. I was actually wrestling with, if anybody... We already have a motion on the table, which I'm probably going to avoid no longer personally. Is... Does it make sense to refer that, this thing, to the Finance Committee for discussion? But I would actually prefer to have an actual measure before I refer anything to the Finance Committee. I think that's the issue. So, you know, like...
That's why I'm motioning to postpone this, because there is no measure this week.
Counselor, and no measures required, because it's a citizen's petition that has a...
Oh, I'm not worried about citizen's petition right now. The citizen's petition is happening regardless, and I'll...
But that's what you're referring to.
I'm not going to have that until like six days.
A presentation of the citizen's petition?
I don't care if we do it as a petition or as this. I withdraw the petition if we just put it on an agenda for a vote. Just to hear it.
But you got to submit a measure. To have a vote, you have to have a measure. You can't vote on a discussion. It's just not allowed.
Anyone here could make a motion related to what we're talking about.
You would lose.
The Council rule said that you have to submit a measure.
Right now. We need to refer. Needs to be discussed.
And then if majority, we vote, then we vote to...
I'd like to...
But we're not going to. Nobody wants to.
Can you guys withdraw the motion, and maybe we just move on with no action? Maybe we just move on with no action on this one tonight and kind of figure out, Mark, if you can get a measure together, we could, you know, probably quickly get it referred to a committee. I know you're on an accelerated timeline. We're not going to rush it. If you can get me a measure by the next meeting...
This is the measure, right?
It's not a measure. It's not a measure.
Formally submit it.
I need an actual measure. I didn't have a chance to read. Whatever was sent out this morning, I didn't have a chance to read it. So it's kind of flying blind on this one. So again, we had the... The motion has been withdrawn at this point. The second has been withdrawn.
Just that direction.
Have the measure, and we can refer it to the Finance Committee or the committee if that's...
Counselor Gould, I'll happily work with you to put the measure together.
Just do it the right way.
Can the attorney help a little bit?
Whatever resources are required, I'm offering that to you, however you want to. I already have the legal... I got it today.
Just submit a measure. We'll do it the right way. All right. You withdrew your motion. Does anybody else have any other motions? Thank you for drawing that. All right. I just didn't want to tie our hands. All right. So let's move on. We got the discussion of the non-binding advisory questions for April 1st, June. Again, Mark had reached out to me the same time they'd reached out about the Rule Act. So we got this on the agenda tonight. Mark, I'll leave it to you. I know there were a few that you were interested in putting on.
Twenty seconds.
I don't know, folks are... Okay, cool.
We've gone long enough. I've submitted a few suggested ballot advisory questions. I think it's pretty cool that the Charter allows us to poll the people so we can just get an idea of what they're thinking on anything. I don't want to go into discuss it now, because I don't think it's fair to counselors to get it thrown at them and not, like, put on an agenda or anything. But some ideas that had been floating around were, would the people be in favor of a mayor? Would they like to build a hockey rink? Would they be in favor of a fire station? But again, I don't expect anyone to chime in on those things tonight.
That wasn't what you submitted. You didn't submit the fire station idea.
Yeah.
No, you didn't. Anyway, anyway, sorry. Go ahead. So the fire station is the one today.
But, yeah, so if anyone wants to talk about it, I'm happy to talk about it now or privately. But I wouldn't want to put anyone on the spot.
Yeah, my point of putting it on this way, guys, was... Because I didn't suspect there would be a lot of interest in having a non-binding ballot question on these topics, right? So that was why I thought it's Mark, the opportunity to kind of see, asking you guys, or I would ask you guys if this is something you want to take personally and don't want to go down this path. Mr. Logan?
Just for the person that wanted to make clear, and anyone that's watching, hopefully there are.
We're recorded.
They can watch it later, and they'll read your E L T. Non-binding, so really it's just like putting it out there and going, hey, do you want a hockey rink? Hey, do you want a mayor? I mean, a hockey rink to, do you want a mayor? I mean, that's like very different topics of conversation. But what is your hope from this? What is your goal?
Also, I mean, nothing specific tonight, but just in general to gauge the public. So like, if they all said, like, hey, we all want a mayor, and 80% of the voters want a mayor, then we should refer that to the Charter Advisory Committee and have them talk about it. Is that something we want to propose a Charter change for? I'm just using that as an example. Or if the people come back and say, we want a fire station, then we got to find a way to do what we can to support that moving up in the C I P.
So with that said, the hope, right, is that we have a large amount of people that come out in April to this? And say, we get our usual numbers of voters to come out and say, they say they want a hockey rink. Is that speaking for the majority of our community by that small number of people that come out and vote, and that's why we should be then taking action on that?
Well, we're all counselors based on the small portion of our community.
I guess what I'm asking you is, is this enough to get that conversation started? Or would maybe, I don't know, a meet and greet town meeting that you put together, asking those same questions to a small group of people rather than the time that we're taking to talk about this and put it onto the agenda and making the elections office make this happen? Just wanted to make sure that we are actually thinking through the things that we're asking.
That's a good point.
Mr. Donovan?
Cards on the table, I get personally no interest in doing non-binding advisory questions. I don't see any point to it. However, and at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I would ask for an actual measure listing non-binding questions that you want us to actually vote on. Without a measure of this, we're a legislative body. We're not a talk show. We need measures to vote on. I don't know how to put it any clearer than that. If you give me a measure, now I get something that I can refer, I've got something I can vote on. If I don't have a measure, I'll, you know, let's talk to Mayor Gaye and have him do a roundtable talk show. But that's not what we are here for. We're a legislature. Thank you.
I think it is best practice for all of us, and I'll make sure I have that feedback to the counselors when I get requests for discussions. I'll just say, give me a measure, please. I think we got away from that a little bit.
On that, I noticed Counselor Slavogan used the Town Managers' Measure Form. Is that the form you want us to use to submit measures? I had never seen a counselor submit a measure before in this body.
How did that happen? What was the process?
An amazing hearing. An amazing asset.
That's the one that...
But that is what... I used to have the numbers. She helped. I just thought to...
Please say that. Sure, I'll help you. We'll put it together.
Thank you. But again, the other point was, because the counselors are interested in this sort of thing, I guess I'm not really interested in it personally. But again, okay.
But click a motion to return. Second.
Yeah, you have a motion in a second to return. Any discussions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, understated? Thank you very much. We are adjourned at 9:44 PM. Thank you, everybody.